It is, yes, I have 401 as well. We'll go ahead and call the January 11th meeting of the Planning Programming and Zoning Commission to Order. First item on the agenda is approval of today's agenda. Are there any revisions?
I have a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, state aye.
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 Motion carried and agenda approved. Next, we'll have approval of the minutes. Were there any revisions or questions or discussion on those minutes from December 28th meeting?
This is Holdenman, I will approve.
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay. If there isn't any discussion, all those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Next, we'll have the financial report for November 2021, please.
This is Anderson with staff. So this puts us at 41% of the year for the reporting purposes, starting on the expense side for personal services, salaries, benefits and all that. We're at 39%. So we're right on track. Contractual services, we're at 40%. Computer software, we're a little bit higher than, just because some of the licensing and some of the software has to be purchased in the advanced part of the year. So we're a little ways over at 50% there. Switching to the revenue side, for the main part of fees and services, we're at 39%. Sale of properties at 6%. We actually have about two sales about ready to go through, so that'll jump up quite a bit. The one thing that we'll have to look at for the year is the recreation area development, rent and property leases. We're at 9,944 11. We're scheduled at 53,000 for the year. So they have determined, this is the mining of East Lake or Brinker Lake, as some may know it. They have determined that there's no more to mine there. So I think we have a $5,000 amount that'll still come into there for the pot, but otherwise that'll be done. So we'll have a deficit in the revenue coming in there that we'll have to make up somewhere else. So other than that, we're right on track.
Any other questions for Noel on that? If not, do we have a motion to place the report on file?
Yes, Lysdico, I motion we approve the financial report.
Second.
Okay. And that was Sue?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? Hey. Motion carried. Next is the time for oral presentation. This is a time for anyone who's either on the call or virtual meeting or in the chambers who wants to speak on a non-agenda item. So something that's not already on the agenda. Noel, is there anyone there in the chambers first that is here in a non-agenda item?
There is not. Anyone getting up?
Okay. Is there anyone on the call or by Zoom who's here to speak on something that's not already on the agenda? Okay. Then the time is 4:05, and a hearing is scheduled at this time per request by Panther Builders LLC for a site plan amendment for 32 new single-family homes in the R1 RP Planned Residence District and the CP Planned Commercial District at the former Edison School site located west of 420 Harwood Avenue. This is on pages 11 through 20 of the packet. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification, signed by Patty McGee stating, "Hi Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, overview, aerial notice map, and site plan were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on December 28, 2021." Do we have a, can we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
Holdenman.
Hold on.
Okay. And we have a second. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. First, we will have the staff report, please.
This is Dornoff with staff. The proposed site plan amendment would be a change from the former school and from the last recommended site plan with four plexes. When the city took ownership of the site, it was rezoned to R1 RP Planned Residence District to encourage infill development of single-family homes which the current applicant is proposing. The site is located along the west side of Magnolia Parkway, directly north of Falls Avenue, and along the east side of Evergreen Avenue. Magnolia Parkway and Evergreen Parkway are designated as local streets. Falls Avenue is classified as a collector. There is currently a sidewalk on the west side of Evergreen Avenue, the west side of Magnolia Parkway, and the south side of Bismarck Avenue, and on the south side of Falls Avenue. It would appear that the site plan amendment would not have a negative impact on vehicular, pedestrian traffic in the area. Sidewalks will be required along all street frontages as the property develops, adding sidewalks in the north side of Harwood Avenue and the east side of Evergreen. The area is currently zoned R1 RP Planned Residence District and CP Planned Commercial District and is zoned as such since being rezoned from R2 102 Family Residence District on May 9, 2011. Surrounding land uses in their zoning to the north residential development zone R2 102 Family Residence District, to the south vacant land and commercial development zone C1 Neighborhood Commercial District and C1 ZZ Conditional Zoning Neighborhood Commercial District. To the east, commercial developments zone C1 Neighborhood Commercial District and residential developments zone R2 102 Family Residence District. And to the west is commercial development zone C1 Neighborhood Commercial District and residential development zone R2 12 Family Residence District. Commercial buildings along Falls Avenue were built between 1946 and 1977. Commercial buildings on Evergreen, buildings were built between 1929 and 1962. Nearby residential buildings were constructed in 1910s and 1960s. There will be no screening as required as part of the site plan amendment. Screening could occur as part of the development of commercial lots to the south when they're developed as commercial buildings. The future land use map does not necessaries parks, open spaces, hospitals, government facilities, public areas, and airport. The site plan amendment is located within the primary growth area. However, it should be noted that the previous site plan, land use map was created when the school was still operating in the, in the site. And at that time, there was no indication that it would close. The future land use map should be used as a guide. The future land use map shows the abutting areas to the west, east, and north as low density residential in the area along Falls Avenue is commercial. The applicant is requesting a site plan amendment to the former Edison Elementary School site that was demolished in 2017. Currently, the site is zoned R1 RP Planned Residence District and is zoned as such since May 9, 2011. When the city took possession of the property, the area was rezoned and encouraged infill development homes. The applicant is proposing construct 32 single-family homes along with a 2.2 acre plus park on the northeast corner. On the residential layout is unique given the footprint of the former school, location of infrastructure, previous plotted lots in the area, and desire to include the park within the design. As such, lots 1 through 11 will have an entrance on their lots by an improved alley 26 wide from the west. This would be in the existing alley. There'll be hard surface and enlarged. Lots will face the park in public walkway. Lots 21, 12 through 21 would have a new alley for primary access from the rear, sharing with lots 22 to 32, which also abuts Magnolia Parkway. Lots 12 to 16 will also have frontage along Evergreen Avenue, but lots 17 to 21 only have, only from the new alley. The alley would be named for addressing purposes for a portion of the lots. The alley would also be designed for 26 feet wide and paved to accommodate garbage truck pickup and potential snowplows. Overall, design is similar to houses built on Acorn Lane in 2006, and that development vehicular entrances to a city to the rear only. There are other older areas of town where similar setups such as Home Park Boulevard is one example. The design layout is to accentuate the park design and match up with previous plotted lot locations and infrastructure placements and create aesthetically pleasing new infill neighborhood. The preservation of the four large oak trees is also obtained in this design. Currently, City Waterloo is taking proactive steps on several infill development sites within the community, utilizing infill development sites within the developed portions of the city where existing infrastructure is readily available as a smart growth practice. And installation and extension of utilities to serve any new development would be minimal, save, saving on future maintenance costs for the city. City of Waterloo has a great level, has a greater level of review for these sites to ensure the infill sites are properly redeveloped to have a positive impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. As staff goes, that any redevelopment of these areas represents the best possible infill for economic development activities. These sites need to uplift the neighborhood, make surrounding neighborhoods encouraged with their redevelopment and secure that is helping property values in the area and create new economic development opportunities for the city. The 32 single-family lots will stay in the character with the size and existing residential properties in the area made primarily of one and one and a half story homes. The applicant will need to plat the property for proper development of the site and park areas once they're separated off. There was discussion at technical review committee. However, it should be noted that most of the discussion centered on items that would be discussed during plating of the lots, including Mid-America requesting easements. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Panther Builders LLC for a site plan amendment to the R1 RP Planned Residence District and CP Planned Commercial District for 32 single-family homes located west of 420 Harwood Avenue at the former Edison School is going to be approved for the following reasons. Site in question would appear to provide sufficient space to meet all the required regulations, including setbacks, drainage, landscape, screen, etc. To propose site plan amendment is area is already served by all necessary utilities with some extensions needed. And three, the site plan area is a planned district to allow for orderly development of land and ensure the citizenry and City of Waterloo that development will occur as planned and approved, subject to the finally following conditions. That the final site plan meets all applicable city codes regulations, etc., including but not limited parking, landscaping, drainage, etc. The sidewalks be installed along the frontages within development, along the east side of Evergreen and north side of Harwood. And any major changes to the plan would need a return from, for another site plan amendment.
Thank you, John. Are there initial questions for John before we see Panther Builders on the phone?
Yeah, this is.
This is Flynn. Oops, sorry.
Go ahead, Sue.
Okay. I was just wondering, has the Neighborhood Association initially, they were very active and involved with the demolition of Edison and the park there that was a very vital part of the neighborhood. And they were very, you know, insistent on keeping somewhat of a park for the kids in the neighborhood and the whole area. And so looking at this map, it looks like there's quite a few trees. I didn't know if it was planned to have like the wooden structures like it used to have for the play structures or metal or what has been designed for that park area. And is the Neighborhood Association involved?
This is Anderson with staff, and I'll just point out, I think there's three members of Leisure Services on the Zoom call, including Paul Hudding, the director. So we can kind of let him talk about the development and design as it relates to the park.
Perfect.
Paul, you're muted.
I do that all the time. Okay, this is Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. We have held, I think it's a total of three meetings now with the Neighborhood Association to talk about planning for the park. There have been some changes made along the way because we've had a couple of different development designs that were under consideration. This one, we spent a lot of time with the developer, ensuring that the large trees, there are several large oak trees there, and the memorial trees that we, one and possibly two, that those would be saved. And then we have a whole list of items that the Neighborhood Association would like. We haven't drilled down to the level of detail of exactly what the play equipment would look like. And in fact, we don't even have the funding yet, but we have requested some funding from, through the block grant process. And we've also done the initial listing of funds that we will be asking for in the future from Black Hawk County Gaming Association. But short term, this is a 2.2 acre park. We'll do some cleanup and trimming of the trees. We'll get some picnic tables in there, probably a temporary sign. Ultimately, we want to build a nice sign using some salvage portable concrete materials from the old Edison School. Those are, those are just some of the highlights. And Rachel Neal is the president of the Neighborhood Association. She's with us tonight too. So Rachel, you might want to add to that, see whatever I might have missed.
Sure. Thank you, Paul. Yes, we've had the opportunity to be able to meet with the city with Leisure Services and be a part of the process. I know they've been doing an excellent job of taking into consideration what the neighborhood, what the people in the area are wanting to see. I know that the park so far is definitely what they were hoping for, and we're excited to work with them in the future as we put that together.
Great. Thank you. I'm glad to hear the collaboration.
In Virginia, there is about 14 citizens here in the audience as well.
Okay. I think Craig had a quick, I think he had a question as well. And then we can, I don't know if someone from Panther Builders is either there in the chambers or on the phone, but we'll go to them first and then, and then get everybody covered. So Craig, do you want to ask your question?
Yeah, just a quick one. I noticed in the technical notes that on that alleyway, Eric had raised a concern about the, apparently there's a jog or something in there that would necessitate maybe changing somewhat of the pavement?
Oh, we lost you. You went to mute.
Oh, sorry. I just was, I was just wondering if, what that would entail. I mean, if we have to, or if that's even something we need to work.
This is Anderson with staff. So yes, Kevin Fittro's here with Panther Builders. He'll kind of address that. I believe another five feet will be, will be used for that new, I think it's Coral Drive, to accommodate that five foot concern.
I have a, I have a quick question for staff. I'm assuming, has this been reviewed with the city fire department just for vehicles, for firefighting access, and also for addresses and so on?
Engineering department is, well, the streets, the alleys will be named so they can be addressed off the alleys. And so the engineering's fine with that. And fire department was at the technical review committee, and they didn't, they didn't have any major concerns.
Yeah, with the 26 foot wide design, which I think there was a portion that was, that was altered from 24 feet to 26 feet on, on the other road, trying to think, Axlewood. And then with Coral Drive. So they'll actually be named as, as streets and changed from alleys for purposes of garbage pickup and to meet the concerns of the, the fire department for addressing and emergency services.
Thank you.
This is Lysdico. I had similar questions. As far as the existing alleyway goes, was there plans to make sure that by basically making it a two-sided alleyway, that we would make sure that we can accommodate, you know, twice the usage of it?
Correct. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be paved and widened out.
Okay.
Thank you to accommodate those.
I have a question too. Real quick then. So the, on the plan, it says that the stormwater detention is going to be addressed by the commercial developer down the road. Is that, with all the new residential houses, is that, I don't, I guess, can you explain that a little bit more?
And I believe Jamie is on from engineering, so he can probably best address that from Jamie Knutson.
Yes. Jamie, can you unmute?
Well, we can come back to him, Noel.
I'm sorry. This is Jamie. Were you after me?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I was on a, I was on a call here in my office on my cell phone. So I apologize for that. What can I answer for you?
Alley, do you want to repeat the question?
Yeah, I was just curious. I was curious about stormwater detention and with all, with 32 residential houses, I'm curious where that's going to go.
Right now, with stormwater ordinance is a little odd. It was, it is intended for basically new developments. Now, in this particular case, the way we're looking at it is they are reusing probably 80% of the existing lots that are there. So we were not going to require stormwater management for this particular thing because it was already, for the most part, a platted subdivision. New subdivisions and green spaces and things like that where they're plating new, that's obviously required, and that's called out in the ordinance. The ordinance is a little, it doesn't specifically say one way or the other for, for these infill lots. And that's kind of what we're treating this as, as an infill area. So right now, the stormwater won't be any different than the rest of the neighborhoods out there. It'll run off to the streets and be captured by the street and taken away from the streets. So, and as a matter of fact, the stormwater will probably be less coming off of this site, even fully developed than what the school and the parking lot and everything else we've had there. So we didn't see it when we talked internally. We didn't, didn't think it was going to be a concern here. The other part is, the space is so limited on this site. If we had to have stormwater in this particular area, we would have torn up a big chunk of the park.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's not your fault, but I will tell you, just personally, I'm pretty frustrated by that because when we did the Irving Square development just a couple of years ago, we had to do stormwater detention, and we had to do some pretty significant engineering over there for a three and a half acre site. That was a school site, so.
But that was unplatted lots at the time, I believe. I don't think, my recollection, and maybe I'm wrong, but my recollection was that those in Irving were not platted lots prior to you getting a hold of them. But maybe I'm wrong.
But who planted this site, then?
This was platted, dear God, Noel, help me with this, but this was platted back in the 40s. I mean, these are lots of records that have been there for a long time.
Yeah, but it's still, it's still, I mean, that's like a technicality. I think that's a little, a little interesting. But also, do you have other examples of what they're going to build there? Like design examples?
Yes, the developer will, can show that when he gets up.
All right. Let's, let's move to have Mr. Fittro wants to come forward. If he's there in the chambers, Noel.
Yes, he is. He's coming forward.
Um, Mr. Fittro, did you want to make a statement to the commission or address any of the comments or questions so far?
I can do my presentation, and then I could answer any questions. A lot of what we've been discussing is, is in our presentation. So I can get started, or I can answer if there are certain questions. The floor plans, the elevations are in my, in my layout. The stormwater, the detention, the plating, I guess, technicality or not, I would start in the way I've looked at this from the beginning. This plat, we had looked at this probably four to five years ago with Noel when I was at Skogman. I think it were probably only about two thirds to 60% of the lots that we're looking to build on that were already there. So all we've done is just taken that plat, restructured these lots so that we could have this type of front porch housing versus your everyday garage front housing that, that you might see in newer subdivisions. So as far as the streets go, I know one of the comments, if you can go to the second slide. As far as the streets go, that has, when we did this, we were starting out calling them alleyways because that's, that's what we had looked at with the original area being an alley, and then adding the second entrance in. As we've talked through with the city, we've named them Coral Drive would be the west alley that's currently there. Axlewood Drive is the new.
At Stiefel Nicholas, we've established ourselves as one of the nation's leading.
Axlewood Drive would be the interior street. Talking more with Noel and with the city at our Leisure Services meeting this morning and with the public, these would be streets. So with the trash, snow removal and the trash hauling, I guess I would probably stop calling them an alleyway and start calling them actual residential streets. So we've got those named and made that statement. For the homeowners, I know that was talking to the Neighborhood Association. That was one of their concerns. A lot of what you're about to see, again, I would just stress, we're in the middle of the market analysis. We've only done so much to this point because we don't, we wanted to make sure with the commission, with P&amp;Z, that this is something that we're going to continue to move forward on. And as many of you probably know or hear, lumber, other products continue to be on the rise and affect us in our daily costs. So everything we're looking at doing, the budgets we put together, the price ranges we're hoping to build, are all dependent on being able to do so. We are starting out with three ranches, one, two, and one, two-story square foot ranges, 1,000 to 26 to 1,400, with a market goal of 220 to 290,000. The, the range for the floor plans are a two-bedroom, one-bath, two-bedroom, two-bath, three-bedroom, two-bath are the three ranches, three-bedroom and two and a half bath for the two-story. So everything that we're looking at doing, we're trying to stay within what's there already, just bringing it into today's looks. Oversized, single or two-car garages, along with basements for all the houses. Making sure that as we do these lots, we're trying to keep the lots as clean as possible on the exterior for a very nice curb appeal. And then all of the front porch, the floor plans have front porch and rear porch entertaining with the garages. Looking at the platted lots, we are staying within the lot sizes that were in the original plat, along with what's, again, very common to the plat sizes, the houses surrounding us. I would say the only difference between these lots and between these lots and what we did on Lincolnshire, which we've had multiple comments, or at least when I was at Skogman, we were commented constantly on the look of Lincolnshire when that went in next to the church there, there, there are 50-foot lots with 40-foot houses, here you're looking at 40-foot lots with 30-foot houses, so, there's not a lot of drastic difference when we talk about side yards, you're seeing this in communities today, if you were to go to Quail Ridge and Cedar Falls, if you would go to, I'm thinking of other RP districts, Crossroads Estates over by Walmart, you're looking at another common area, almost very similar to this, at 45-foot lots, but even in RP, when we deal with 300, 400,000 dollar homes, we've got five-foot side yards, so, not uncommon to anything that's happening throughout all of residential, going on to the next slide, we'll get into some of the plans, you're seeing some of the architects' renditions right now, our Eastern floor plan, you can keep scrolling a little bit, the Eastern floor plan is our three-bedroom, two-bath, does have the main floor utility, full kitchen nook area, side entrance or, or rear entrance for entertaining, for grilling, nice front porch curb appeal, the two-car garage or single garage would be off the back, the next floor plan is our Dalton, this would be the two-story, this is a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, again, as you look at the floor plan itself, has all of the features that we are building today in, in higher square footage homes, the half-bath, main floor laundry, drop zone, storage, you enter in the rear off the utility, fireplaces, three bedrooms upstairs, moving on to the next one, Eric, thank you, the Garrison is our two-bedroom, two-bath, again, just, we'll probably just scroll through these fairly quickly, as it's giving you the same concept, just in different size, different layouts, and the last one that we're looking at is the Oakley, that has two different elevations that we're working from, so, that's the two-bedroom, one-bath, this idea, as we talk about it, this idea, in my head, when we started talking four to five years ago, I was thinking about these types of floor plans, as I had seen them down in Charleston, South Carolina, in their everyday projects, out in Ankeny right now, you have three different subdivisions that have this style of housing going on, where they have the front, front porches, front walkways, with rear garages, a couple more down there is showing you just the rear yards, where the rears share the rear yard of each other, that way you have the ability to have families, kids playing out in front, our area here where we've been able to be excited about partnering with the park, you have the park now where these front porches are going to face that park, if your kids are out playing, you're in your house, you get to see what they're doing, and still try to maintain some type of green space where if there is that concern of the, some of the houses that get down away from the park, they have backyards where kids can still be out in, the trails completely surrounding, people can walk, get nice use out of the park, and kids are able to play and never really leave the house, so, that, that handles our presentation.
Mr. Fittro, did you want to address Alley's question about the stormwater detention or kind of what your thoughts are or plans on that?
Well, as, as already been stated, we've, we've really deferred to engineering on that as far as what we were going to need to do, in partnering with the park, not wanting to take away use, usable space from the park, and the fact that with the rooftops and the more green space, we're not expecting near the watershed that you would have had when you were there with the school, I do have Nick Brewer, if you're looking for further answers, our engineer is here with us, he could answer more if, if needed.
This is Commissioner Lysdico, a couple of questions about just basic things here, will those electrical service lines, will those be underground or above ground like some of the older stuff, I know when we did Irving, we actually put all the electrical lines underground.
We'd be going by mid-am and I, I don't think they're putting anything overhead today, I think everything there would be anticipated to be underground.
Very good, and then, those new streets will have curb and gutter, I'm...
Right now, we're leaning against curb and gutter because with the 40-foot, and if you have a 20-foot driveway or a 19-foot driveway, you're going to be very close drive to curb, drive to curb.
Okay.
So, we felt it just for flow through there to be better to be paved without curb.
And that's in line with a lot of the other streets in that area, if I remember right, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Fittro, I have a quick question, maybe you can address it, maybe, maybe someone else can, just a quick question about on-street parking, if the driveways are relatively short, what accommodations are, has that been looked at, what considerations have been given to on-street parking when on-street parking is not going to be available because obviously not going to have the amount of drives within the street, are these alleyways, quote, streets, designed for single-sided loaded parking or, or are the alternatives looked at?
Good question.
Just answering specifically from us, we haven't necessarily decided on the length of driveways yet, we're leaning to an attached garage when we do them, if we pulled the house forward, one of the Ankeny projects that I viewed, they went with a larger rear area, which allowed for a longer driveway, so you could get, some of those instances, you could get one car up, another car behind it, that's one thing we're considering, but right now, from the parking from the park and, and neighbors around, it's more anticipated with those alleyways, we did consider a no parking because they are city streets, we could put the no parking signs up so there's no parking in the alleys, that way we don't have issues with emergency vehicles, trash hauling, things like that.
If there aren't any other questions from Mr. Fittro at this time, why don't we see if, Noel, you said there were several people in the chambers?
That is correct.
Is that correct? So, now would be a time for folks to come forward, we do ask that when you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, but we'll start with people who are there in the chambers to speak on these agenda items, on this agenda item.
My name is Jay Healdwood, I live at 641 Evergreen, 42 years now, I guess, one question for, the prices there, the 220, was it 220 to 290,000, that per unit? You know, I've been looking through them and doing some stuff here over the past couple of years, $220,000 is not a price that, a price point in that neighborhood at all that I've seen anything, you know, just, I'm just saying, another thing too, the, the parking along those, like lots one through 10, just parking in the alley, that'll be it, and, there's no, that's going to be a problem, you know, but, stormwater retention too, I know I don't live too far from there, I really don't want, I don't want my basement to be a, of the, the stormwater retention for the, for the new building project, anyway, I'm not an engineer either, but, but I also like to keep my basement dry, you know, I live there, and I never had a problem in the 42 years I've been there, so, I'd hate to see it start now, so, I just have some questions, I like it better than the last situation we had, I think there's ways we can work around this and all that, and basically happy with it, we're going to get something in there, and, there's not a whole lot we can complain about, but we can work with them and, and try to get that stuff worked out, whereas, the people will buy the houses, they have to be marketable also, you know, so, you know, and our neighborhood isn't the, you know, it's not Prospect Boulevard, but, you know, it will improve it, but, we'll see what happens, thank you.
Thank you.
Nick Brewer, 2920 McLean, Cedar Falls, thanks for the comments, I think we actually talked a little bit when I was out there and just kind of wanted to address some of the concerns about the stormwater, you know, the drainage is going to the south and it would function much like the current site does and as it did while the school was there with parking in a larger building as far as equivalent pervious areas concerned, and as far as some of the parking concerns, there is currently a lot of parking in the alleyway as it sits, and as we look to widen that and have the longer drives, I think that will definitely help with that, and then we also have a lot of perimeter parking around the site, Magnolia Parkway, Evergreen, and Bismarck, I believe even some on Harwood, so if there's any other questions that I can answer, as far as technical questions relating to engineering, let me know, thanks.
Janet Collins, 538 Magnolia Parkway, I've lived there for 46 years, and I am totally baffled, why in the world wouldn't you just take Evergreen, take it over to Harwood? But fewer, fewer houses, 32 houses on that lot is way too many, I talked to John on the phone the other day, our lots are 40 by 125, if I wanted to build on to my house, we can't, because our lot's not big enough, every other school that you have put houses on has bigger lots, put fewer houses up there, extend Evergreen down, put curb and gutter on there, I don't think the neighborhood would have a problem with it, I don't understand when you're saying you can put a 40-foot lot on there, now, when I talked to him, he said it had to be plotted by 1969, to have a 40-foot lot on there, as far as I know, the school was there from 1914, and the new addition on the school, 1955, so how could those lots be plotted when there's been a school on there, they, I don't, I need some explanation, so I understand, because I'm not happy with this at all, 32 houses is way too many on that lot, as far as parking, you can't get down Magnolia Parkway a lot of times, like I said, I've lived there for 46 years, I have two daughters that grew up in that area, when they come to my house, when they park out front, my neighbors don't have a place to park, so as far as parking for all 32 of those houses, you say Magnolia Parkway and Harwood, Harwood's half a block long, Magnolia Parkway, you're, you're not going to have enough parking, and people, I, like I said, I've been there for a long time, I'm old, people are ruder now than they ever have been, they pull up, they park in the street, and they don't want to get out of your way so you can go down the street, now that's going to be exasperated with driveways that you say alleyways, I, I need some clarification on some of this stuff.
Forrest Dilvoo, 1725 Huntington Road, I own a house on Harwood, I own a house on Janey, they're both on 40-foot lots, 40-foot lots create a lot of problems, number one, if you try and put a driveway beside them, you've got pressure on the, on the walls in the basement, causes them to curve, crack, break, leak, causes the driveway to settle towards the house, making water run in the house, not only that, these lots, one through 11, looks to me like they face an alley, you can call it an alley, you can call it a street, but it's an alley, alleys don't have stormwater, I don't believe there's one storm drain over there, I previously owned a house in the 600 block of Evergreen, and I was over there a lot, that one doesn't have a basement, but, anyway, yours, one through 11 doesn't even have a street frontage, 17 through 21, in the drawing I have, shows them facing an alley or having an alley, houses facing an alley are not attractive, they won't be easy to sell, houses on a 40-foot lot, you can't even get in the backyard, if they have an alley, you can get in from the alley, the city doesn't plow alleys, so you're not going to get any, any city plowing, so, it will be up to the residents to try and plow that and get in and out, stacking cars in the driveway as the gentleman suggested doesn't work, you don't all go to work at the same time, you've got kids coming and going, you're putting in three-bedroom houses, most three-bedroom houses are going to have three cars, couple for the adults and one for a child, or more, to me, this, this looks more like a, a mobile home court, the way they're squeezed in on 40-foot lots, that many lots in this small of area definitely makes it look like a mobile home court, and yes, there are 40-foot lots all around Waterloo, but aren't we wanting to get better and look better and be better, do we have to settle for 40-foot lots the rest of our life here in Waterloo because there's some around, new development should be new, it should be better, 60-foot lot would not be bad, my home's built on two 50 by two 50 lots, and I can get around one end of the house, I, my lot's set sideways, it's, it doesn't set longways like a trailer house, and I believe, and I've talked with Noel, and we haven't come to an agreement yet, that the door of the house has to be facing the street, the front door of the house, one of the past mayors we had, when we were told we had to take factory-built homes into the city, he said we may have to take them into the city, but we don't have to make the city look like a trailer court, we're going to have them have a front door on the front of the house, and to me, several of these don't even have a front street, they've got alleys, you can, you can call an alley a street unless you put in stormwater and everything else in that street, it's going to be a mud hole, even if it's concrete, the water's all going to run in the yards, you've got to have stormwater, we have stormwater problems all over this city, massive, and our city engineering department isn't keeping up, they put in sump pumps in the Huntington Park area over there and the, one area Waterloo, all the rest of Waterloo gets water in the basements and everything else, we do not need to create another water hole over there, we just don't need it, smart development is what we need, we need development there, I am very pleased that Paul Hudding and the Parks Department are working on the park on the north end, that is a great asset for that neighborhood, and on the south, the business on Falls Avenue, that is a good point in this, in this drawing, but let's do smart development, let's get stormwaters that'll handle this extra water, yeah, it was there before, but it wasn't in the same degrees, and if you put basements in them houses, it'd be like building in a lake, I, I live on Huntington Road, I know exactly what that is, I punked as much as 12 inches off my floor, and the city told us when they kept building out there, you've got plenty of room in this, in the sanitary, no, the sanitary shuts down, it runs into our basements, and then we have indoor sewage, I think we can do a little better, we're making steps, we're, this is better than the last one, thank you.
Mr. Dilvoo, are you still having sewage in your basement when it rains, I know the city's done a number of improvements in that area, so I'm just curious if it's not working.
No, I am not having, thanks to the sump pumps that the city paid for and we put in, it is true, and they, they, I don't believe they slip lined all of the area yet either, they are making improvements, I agree, 100%.
Thank you.
Amy Card, Iowa, level at 722 Inglewood Avenue, I've been in the neighborhood since birth, my mom lives at 538 Magnolia, I have... since birth. My mom lives at five thirty-eight Magnolia. I have a road that does not have curb, and the only reason why we have any type of sewage where the water goes is because my old neighbor that passed away quite a few years ago, she and the few other neighbors put money towards making it happen. Now, as of right now, when it, water comes down very heavily, that road floods, period. My house was hit with the two thousand eight flood big time. The only reason why I didn't have near as much damage as my neighbors is because we had three subpumps put in downstairs at that time. I don't get as much water in the basement as I used to. However, if it rains, I do get water because it floods. That's my concern with not having the waterway there. Thank you.
Hi there. Melissa Hines, six oh four Kirkwood. I've been there over thirty years. I do have a few concerns. I'm happy that we have someone in who wants to make single homes. That sounds good. However, looking at the median listing home price for our neighborhood is a hundred thousand, and that's as of December twenty twenty-one, not two hundred thousand. So having the, these houses in sounds a little more expensive than what the neighborhood would be able to take care of. I'm also concerned that we don't have handicap parking for our park. I would like to see two spaces for it so that way there is off-street parking. The other thing that I was considering, and I'm probably going to have a problem with that, I'm not sure why Axelwood and Coral are the streets there. Harwood would probably be okay because they extend it. The other thing I was wondering is about a teacher that used to be at Edison, and he died this last year, Mickliczek, Mike Mickliczek. And I was kind of wondering if maybe we could name one of the streets for him, if that would be something that we could pull for. As kind of an honor, he was a music teacher for a very, very long time. I realize the name might be a little concerned because it is kind of hard to spell, but if we can go with Ainsborough, we can do Mickliczek. I am a little worried about the drainage. That whole area has had problems. I know when we had the flood in two thousand eight, even the cemetery was underwater. And so that is a big concern. I hope that they can answer where all this water is going to go. Thank you.
Is there anyone else there in the chambers that wants to speak on this agenda item?
There is no one approaching the mic.
Okay, we'll go to the phone and Zoom. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this agenda item?
Madam Chair, Dave Boson. Hi. I, the, the concerns that, that people are bringing forward on the, on the stormwater retention are, I think are legitimate concerns. I, I did have a question possibly for Jamie because these, these new roadways aren't going to have curb and gutter. So I, to me, it seems like an issue trying to get water to go one direction or the other. But I'm curious, because this was plotted long before Edison School was in there, and we're talking fifty-plus years ago that this was plotted, we didn't have the same stormwater retention requirements that we have today. So I'm just curious if, if, just because it was plotted fifty years ago, and now that things have changed, why wouldn't we require some sort of stormwater retention now? I mean, I don't know if Lincolnshire was plotted. I mean, it was set up at the city street at one time, but I do believe Lincolnshire was required to have stormwater retention. That's all I have.
Jamie, did you want to respond?
Sure, I can respond.
Okay.
I'd have to go back and look at Lincolnshire, but I don't think that was plotted at the time. Noel, maybe you remember. It wasn't, I don't believe there were any existing lots in there until the time that they did that. The problem is, I know Mr. Boson and I will have a, have a different, can have a different discussion on what constitutes infill and things like that, but there's, these infill sites are just very problematic to try to deal with and to retrofit things in. They just don't necessarily work real well. Again, we've been trying to treat infill developments, things like this on the inner parts of the city that were never originally set up for stormwater detention or some of these other things that we would do now, trying to treat them a little bit differently than ones where you're building out in Ottoman that have nothing but green grass and farm fields. It just, it's kind of apples and oranges. It just makes it a little difficult to try to shoehorn some of this stuff in and try to get it to the point where a developer is, can or will do anything on that particular site. So I guess that's the best I can give you.
Jamie, I'm going to have to push back on that a little bit because we had, we put in a detention pond, we put in a whole intake, we put in a pipe underneath the properties going out to the stormwater on the Irving site. So we had to retrofit something in a three-and-a-half acre site on an old school site for Irving Square because of the issues at the time. So I guess I don't, I still don't understand the difference, whether it was plotted eighty years ago or not differently. To Dave's point, it's, it's still the same issue today. So I guess I don't understand. It's very expensive, I'll say that, but we had to make it work on three-and-a-half acres to put a whole detention pond behind two, two of the lots. And everything had to be graded a certain way and run it over there, so I don't know. I'm confused, I guess.
I have a quick question for Jamie, too. If you're done, because I, I just want to know, like, on the, on the infill development, and we're calling it infill, behind the YMCA, and we're putting in multiple units of duplexes, is there detention required there?
There is, and that, again, was un, un, unplatted property that they had to go through and platter. Right now, a developer could come in right now, today, and this is my understanding of it, they could come in there right now, today, and start putting up houses on the lots as they are existing without any stormwater detention, period. Because those are existing lots that are there. The difference in some of these that you're bringing up is they're made, they are infill, but they were never plotted until the time that the development came through. Right now, when you go to the, when you go and look at the plat for Edison School, for this school site, these lots are already laid out on forty-foot lots. Somebody could come in there tomorrow and start putting up buildings and not be required to do any stormwater detention because, again, these plotted, these lots are lots of record that were plotted and are there currently and are not required to have detention, whereas these other ones are still required to have detention because there weren't lots there. They couldn't go in and start building a house. That's, I guess, the biggest difference.
This is, this is, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, I think we under, we've got the difference down, but the, I think the same, the issue is still the same. Whether or not the plat, you know, is old enough and didn't require it, the issue is still, is it still needed today? Because things were a lot different than most neighborhoods, no matter where they are, have issues with stormwater these days. It's a reality of living in Iowa. So is it something that needs to be reviewed based on the people who live near there and their comments and what's going on and what the city has had to do with even the surrounding streets recently and other neighborhoods? Is it something that needs to be considered? I don't know how we go about that procedurally, but, you know, going forward as a commission and saying, yes, we want development, we need to do it responsibly, and stormwater is a major issue for most developments in our community these days. So that's the way I still see the issue, is not whether or not, you know, it, it needs to be required, but should it still be there? And I would, I would hope that the developer also wants to be concerned with that and have that issue worked out before building houses because once the houses are built, that's sure a heck of a time to try and change things in the layout. When basements start flooding for either those homes or basements are cracking or the streets are flooding, that, that's, that's my take on it. I don't know if other.
One of the things that I will say, and, there's a, the, the thing to keep in mind is the, the idea behind, and I'm going to give you all a quick lesson on stormwater detention. The volume of water that will fall on the Edison site, that same amount of water is going to run off that site whether there is a stormwater detention basin or not. The stormwater detention basin, what it does is it holds the water and lets the water out slowly to the city's stormwater system. Doesn't magically get rid of the water. All it does is just meters that water out to the city's stormwater system so that it can handle it. The city's stormwater system that is currently out there on all of those streets were designed however long ago, and the amount of, you know, you're still going to have issues whether or not that detention basin is there. Once those, once that street, once that storm sewer is full, it's full. There, there is no more room for it. You may not have water coming off of or running off of the Edison site, but everything else around it does not have stormwater detention. And any, any flooding that goes on now is, is still going to happen whether there is a stormwater detention system there or not. This is, the detention is not a cure-all for the fact that most of the pipes within the city of Waterloo are undersized, period, V N. Storm sewer is, is generally too small. And in, to Mr. Dilvoo's point, with the sanitary sewer, a lot of the homes in Waterloo have drain tile that is connected directly into their sanitary sewer. And that all contributes to basement flooding and things like that. It's not just the water, the, the rain that comes down and falls down on the ground. So I don't, this side of development, I mean, we can argue back and forth with, with whether or not this needs to have stormwater detention. I guess it's, it's up to, this is how we've kind of looked at things in the past. If the commission wants to go ahead and put that caveat on there, that is certainly up to them, how they want to do it. I am in the process, all I can tell you is I'm in the process of redoing the stormwater ordinance. I am, just haven't gotten to that point. It's about ninety-five percent complete, and I have to take it back to council, but I am not to that point yet. And this is one of the things that's in there. We're talking about infill developments and things like that, so.
Thank you.
I guess I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner.
And thank you, thank you for those answers, Jamie. I'm assuming when you're looking at the ordinance for, for development, are you, are, is the, is the policy they're looking to rewrite essentially address requiring some sort of detention for those areas or is it just to not require it for flooded, previously flooded sites?
Well, basically, I'm looking at, at a couple options. One of them, it's called, what's, what's called a fee in lieu of. But basically, if it becomes too difficult for a specific site, and these are more intended for brownfield sites where you have environmental contamination or things like that, where you can't necessarily do underground stormwater detention, the developer could contribute a certain amount of money to the city, and the city could then take that and go put it into storm sewer improvements in that area or, or improvements in another area if there aren't, isn't anything directly needed right there at that particular location. So that's one of the things that we're, we're looking at. A few cities do do that. But yes, one of the other things is looking at what to do with some of these infill sites. Because, again, I don't necessarily disagree that we shouldn't do some of this stuff, but again, it's hard to force this on some of these, on some of these infill lots. So that's all those is in the mix, and we're still reviewing that right now.
Yeah, and I, I want to put, I think, Jamie, one other question that may be related to the developer or the engineer and possibly city staffing, and that is, you know, looking at the, the county website for the Waterloo, you know, property, the Beacon website that goes through the history of property plating of how it is. It is laid out in forty-foot by one hundred foot, uh, foot lot like, like Mr. Boson has stated. Just curious, you know, in, in that original plat, it did have a street going through, yes. That, that one right there, it had shown streets going through with an iron block. Curious as to why some moderation or some conglomeration similar to this was not, is not looked at or was not looked at in conjunction with the park? Or had that been looked at?
This is Kevin.
Probably a question for the developer.
We, we did, we did look at this. One is the type of housing that we were looking at with the, with a little different style with the front porches and, and trying to look at a way to present this to the park. If you're looking at that first one, if, again, I, I like this plat, and if we're not doing a park, I'd be all for, all for looking at this. But if you're going to take the lots out, you're going to create a cul-de-sac, and you still have, you have more lots if we're doing that than if, than what we're looking at right now. We are, I'm going to defer back a little bit to the stormwater. We haven't developed an area yet in my twenty-three years between Scogman and here where we weren't concerned about the stormwater detention. That's very much on our minds. I don't have an area out there that we've gotten calls that they're having water issues with. In our intentions with the city streets and the alleyways, while we weren't talking curb and gutter, you know, again, we're working through all of this with engineering, we are talking about either an inverted alley where we have storm intakes in the center or we have intakes off to the side. So as we're talking about, our understanding of all this, again, and going through it with Jamie, is we're not bringing any more water to this surface than what's already going to hit it. This, these areas, these storm sewers are already dealing with it. We're just now slowing it down because you have less concrete, you have more yards. You do have the streets, which if we go to this type of plan, you still have the concrete, you still have the roadways. But with the green space, we're slower than what the school was. And if we bring the intakes in there somehow, we're pulling it off the surface and getting it into the storm sewer. Now we're on to what the main question is, can our storm sewer system take it? And it doesn't, if, if that's going to be the question, you have it there already, and you're not going to have any other development in there ever. So as we look at this, we are, and, and I'm not saying curb and gutter, I'm not saying there any, there's anything about those streets that's off the table. Stormwater detention is a big concern, and Nick and I have reviewed this from the start. Did we need the detention? Did we need to do it? What would it be called for? What type of water movement do we have? It's a straight shed down to Falls Avenue, so it's moving in the one direction. And we're trying, we'll try to accommodate that with this interior alleyway the best we can, roadway the best we can. So.
I don't know, Paul, if you want to talk a little bit about the design for why they didn't put that street through as well for the park layout?
Yeah, this is Paul again. Basically, the, what you see, it's been shown to you and incidentally approved by the Waterloo user services commission at their meeting this morning along with the recommendation to accept the park configuration as shown on the documents that you've seen. And along with that, they're supporting the, the residential development with it. What you see there is a result of some real long and spirited conversations between Park Superintendent Ted Deerfield, myself, and the developer, and Noel. We started in Noel's office and. Noel. We started in Noel's office and, and what he first brought to us probably resembled more of what you're talking about than what, what you see now. Um, we're doing everything we can to protect some large old growth oak trees and to create a space that will work well, um, as a city park. And to have a road running through the middle of that is not going to, um, serve that purpose well. So I, I guess, um, storm water discussion aside, assuming the storm water issue can be resolved successfully with this configuration, that's, that's what we want. We do not want the park to become a storm retention bond because we've dealt with those. Uh, we have a number of parks in Waterloo that double as storm retention bonds. And, and that, as you can imagine, presents its own set of difficulties and limitations as to what you can, can put in those parks. So that's, that's kind of a summary of how we got to the configuration we have. It was a lot of compromise on the part of the developer to meet our request of where and how that part might be laid out. Thanks.
All right. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Lysikos. I got, I got a few as well. Um, first up, uh, as far as references to 2008 flooding, there wasn't a lot of dry places in this city. Uh, and we realized that we had a lot of shortfalls in, in our storm water management. Um, and that's definitely separate from sanitary sewers. I was just curious, um, as far as the most recent lift station in that area, I think is Fletcher and University. When was that put in?
Jamie can probably best answer that. It was because of the 2008 flood funding.
I believe it was 2010 or 11, somewhere in there. I have to go back and look, but Noel's right. It was right after the, the 08 flood. Um, that is, the best, the best way I can explain all this is a lot of the drainage from that particular area, everything basically drains to Blackhawk Creek. And it has to go through Levy at Blackhawk and it's Blackhawk Creek. Once the levy, we closed the levy and shut off all the storm sewers getting to Blackhawk Creek to prevent Blackhawk Creek from coming back and flooding everybody, there's no place for the storm water to go to. So it builds up and starts flooding the streets. The, the storm water lift station that is there will help with that in the future. I will never say that there won't be floods over there again because I learned a long time ago to never say never. But it will certainly help to lessen the issues that we saw over there in 2008. Will it happen again? Probably. Mother Nature does whatever she wants regardless of what, what you or I want her to do. But we've done a lot of things, not just in this area, but all over the city to try to, um, minimize future flooding. Um, it always comes down to dollars and, and there's never enough of, of that. But this will certainly help with the storm water in that whole area. And that's why we put it in.
Thank you. Uh, has there been any recent, uh, upgrading of the storm or sanitary sewer, uh, piping in that neighborhood as far as sleeving or expanding the diameter of that pipe?
Nothing specifically there. We've done some work on university as part of that particular project to help with some of that. But, um, again, something to keep in mind and not to get too down in the weeds with everybody on this. Um, most cities and even, even the DOT, when they reconstructed Highway 63 through downtown, Mullen and First, most places only design their storm sewer systems to handle a 10-year flood, a 10-year storm. What we saw in 08 and what we saw in 16 were, were well over 100-year storms. Um, so even the DOT doesn't design their storm sewers to handle every storm, every storm event that will ever happen. We just, we can't afford it. Um, so we have to pick something and there are consequences to that. Um, and it's not just us, it's every place that has that, that issue. Because again, part of it is, I don't even know we can put, I'm not sure we can even put storm sewer that's big enough to carry all that storm water from the area to Blackhawk Creek without the storm sewer being out of, above the street. It would take something that big. And sometimes you just physically can't fit anything in there either. So, um, so I guess the short answer is no, there hasn't been any upgrades in particular in that neighborhood itself. But we have done some things down at University to try to help, uh, help the area, um, in the future.
All right. Uh, thank you. Uh, the final question I got is, how many, uh, students did Edison School have back in the day? Anyone? We knew a former teacher. Um.
Well, Edison was originally a K to six school. So if you just would put an average of 25 in a classroom and three sections per grade, that would be your number.
Very good. Thank you. Um, so in a nutshell, as far as the sanitary sewer part of this goes, uh, this area's handled sanitary sewer uses probably quite a bit higher than, uh, putting 32 homes on it with an average of two and a half to three people in a home. Um, I, I think, I think that alleviates my concerns and I appreciate you answering my questions. Thank you.
Okay, we have, um, we do, I do know of one other person who is on the phone that has a question, a resident. Um, Ms. Hickox, do you want to unmute and, um, state your name and then address, please?
Yeah, can you hear me? Okay. Um, yeah, Melissa Hickox.
Melissa, I'm sorry. This is Virginia. We're getting a lot of feedback.
I had a question on the lot lines. It made this a sensational thing on my point. Um, so.
Can she type in the comment section?
If you're able to.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, no, we're not. If you're able to type your question in the comment section, we'll, we'll read it for you. We're getting a lot of feedback. I'm sorry. Okay. The question is, is it possible to replat or draw the lot lines? They predate most of us. So why can't we replat the lot lines? Um. Noel, would you have an answer?
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at Kevin to see, obviously this is something the developer came up with for a lot size that they thought was, was similar to the area, but he might be able to answer it better from a market analysis.
We looked at, uh, multiple different things. But again, as we were working with the parks to make sure they had enough acreage and to make this, I mean, the development has to make sense financially as well. Uh, so looking at the fact that as one current owner's already stated, they have these lot sizes already. The number of units per square foot or per acre are no different. It, it just made sense to us to leave them the same and find a housing line that, that meets that product. Um, along that lines to the housing product, I've been trying to figure out a couple of comments where people felt like, um, houses were going to be facing the alley. The, the front porches you were seeing all face out. They face to Magnolia. They face into the park. The drives all go to the alleyways. So there, there's no front porches facing the alleyways. Um, I didn't know if I needed to make that clear. But as far as lot sizes, I mean, could you, I'm not going to say you can't. But again, when we come to economies of scale and have to make things work, this is, this is the plat that we, we lied in on. So.
Well, I do have a couple of questions.
And then I think.
Go ahead.
Oh, um, is that Patricia?
No.
We have someone at the podium, Virginia.
Okay. Go ahead.
What is the reasoning why they didn't take Evergreen down to Harwood? He's the developer though. Oh, okay. Is there a reason for that?
The question was, why didn't Evergreen go north to Bismarck?
Yes. And just put houses on those lots instead of all this alleyway, 32 lots on that. Like I said before, I'm on a 40 by 125 lot. 1995, we wanted a double garage because my daughters started driving. Couldn't do it because we didn't have a big enough lot. They let us remodel. So my husband, kind of man he was when he was alive, we left a wall up and remodeled our garage. So we have a, it's not really a double-sized garage, but it worked for us. Also, when he was alive, we wanted a front porch on our house instead of the little stoop that we had. Went to the, uh, variance, was turned down because it, it didn't pass. He's been gone for 21 years. And now I have my porch now because things have changed. But I don't understand, like someone said, this looks like a trailer park. And it does. The houses he's talking about, Lincolnshire, they're on side, they're on lots 50 feet wide. I can hear my neighbors on both sides of me when they correct their kids, when they get in fights. It's just 40, I have a 30-inch or 30-foot house on a 50 lot. That house was built in 1963. All the people around me are older, passing away. The landlords are coming in, buying those houses. And now we get rental properties. If you look at everybody that you sent the letter out to, the 250 lots, there's 85 houses. 25 of those are rental. Those people in those rental houses don't care about the neighborhood. And I just don't understand why you guys seem to be out for the money. I understand you want tax money off there, but you've never had tax money off that property before. You go to Lincoln, where they tore down Lincoln School, those lots are 50. Francis Grouse, those lots are 63. And they're all longer than ours. Van Eaton, their lots are 68. So why? Just because we have 40 in there? And this gentleman told me it was plotted before 1969. How could it be? How could it be plotted for single-family houses when it was a school? I'd just like some answers.
Okay, um, we do have, we do have some, go ahead. Is that Noel?
No, that's, uh, that's Lysikos just thinking about that. We have a lot of city properties, I think, that are already plotted for residential uses. At times I was looking at a map, uh, last month over an item up by Verdun Creek and I seen Part of Gates part platted.
Okay, we still have a few questions, I know, from on the call. So, um, I know, Ms. Neal, do you want to unmute and address the question?
Hey, my name is Rachel Neal. I'm the Edison Neighborhood Association President, 1056 Evergreen Avenue. And there's a couple of things I just wanted to say. I know back last year in the summer when we came together talking about a different development, there were some things that the neighborhood strongly communicated that they really wanted and desired for this lot. Um, and so far, everything that we're seeing here meets that. I know the neighborhood really wanted the single-family homes, homes that would not be likely to turn immediately into rentals, um, which is what we're kind of looking at with some of these nicer homes that they're talking about building. Of course, the park has been a huge thing. I know the size that the neighborhood was really hoping for this exceeds that by a little bit, which is also excellent. Um, I guess, I feel like some of the neighborhood's a little confused. We want larger lots, but we also want houses to be sold for less than what the developer was mentioning. Um, I also know that in all of my time with the association, I have not heard about any concerns with water, um, as far as storm water or any concerns as far as the sewer backing up. So if there are problems with that anywhere in the neighborhood, that would be news to me. Um, I also have not heard of there being any problems when the school was there. So if that has not been a problem in the past when the school was there, I guess I'm not personally anticipating an issue with this development. Um, but yeah, overall, I'd say from where the association is coming from, you know, we are really happy to see what Panther Builders brought to the table and that they and the city have worked really hard to hear us, to try and work with us and be able to figure out something that will be a benefit and a win for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on the phone or, um, on Zoom who hasn't spoken that is here to speak on this agenda item?
No, but there's someone that wants to get up again.
Okay, um, please come forward, but do keep, do keep, we do have other agenda items. So we, please keep your comments concise.
I will be glad to do that. Forrest Villaloo, 1725 Huntington Road. I would like to make my statement a little more clear to the builder. Lots one through 11, I stated would be facing in the alley. I did not know by looking at this drawing which they, they face, now they face the middle of the, middle of the property with only a sidewalk and a front yard. To me, a home has a street as a front yard, not a, not an alley or a, or a sidewalk. 17 through 21 and one through 11 are all like this. They are not traditional homes if they don't have a street in front of the house. At one time, in my neighborhood, there was an alley and people wanted to build houses on the backside of the alley and were refused because there was no street. There was plenty of room on the lots. They were 250 or 300 foot deep, but they wouldn't allow it. Thank you.
Uh, Kevin Fittro, just, uh, for Panther, just, um, one comment to a few things that I've just heard recently. Uh, I, I guess everybody has their opinion on, on how they would want to see a house sit and, and how they're going to use it. I know if I have a park and I've got young kids, I'd love to sit on my park, front porch, stare out at the park and see my kids. We also took into account size of house lots. What do the neighbors directly surrounding these houses see? And that's why we came up with the rear garages and the front porches. So those along Magnolia Parkway see those homeowners' front porches. They see those people. They see the front door on the street, the way it's addressed, the way, uh, the, the former owner or current owner just stated. So as far as, um, I guess I'm, I'm kind of struggling a bit with the value concern. If we're, if our concern is rentals and two, two quick comments. If our concern is rentals, us being at a 220 to 290 is not a common rental price range. Now, if you do, I'm not going to say there's somebody that falls on hard times. They sell their home. They, they need to do something to move on. They get a new job, can't sell it. That's, that's an executive rental or somebody that maybe made some bad decisions early in life that are working on their credit and trying to come through that just can't buy yet. That mortgage payment is going to be more of an executive-type rental, family rental than it is your everyday, uh, as I think somebody mentioned Slumlord or the way we think of rentals these days. So we're doing nothing with the park and these housings but to increase the value of this area. Um, secondly, I, I can go to 45 feet, I can go to 50 feet, and then the houses can be a bit bigger. 45 means a 35-foot house. 50 means 40. Lincolnshire, those lots are at 50 feet because that was not a platted area prior. That's why it needed detention. And those were more consistent with the, with the, uh, lots that we backed up to than we had twin homes across the street. We have $400,000 homes. I live in a subdivision right now that has five-foot side yards. So looking at a 40-foot lot, a 45-foot lot, a 50-foot lot, a 63-foot lot, you have a five-foot side yard, you're still looking at five foot in between and that doesn't change. So as much as I want to try to accommodate everybody and I realize we're not going to make everybody happy with this. I would love to make a high percentage and, and make as many people happy with this. And I'm happy to go offline and answer more questions tonight outside of the meeting with the owners. But nothing that I'm hearing right now is, can I look at and say, we're going to cure a concern if we go back and change this. So if we go to 45 feet and we stay with a 30-foot house, it's not the houses that, that are desired. Uh, so that, that would be my final comment. Uh, so that, that would be my final comment. Could you pull the map up again so I can, and if you've got it, you can come up with me.
And you'll need to repeat the question because we, we didn't hear you on the phone and by Zoom.
The question was why Evergreen wasn't extended northerly up to Bismarck. And I think if you bring up, go ahead.
Specifically Evergreen, that was initially our, our roadway, and that was the Parks Department. That is one of the oldest trees right there that they were concerned we were going to destroy by taking that down, along with possibly another two to three more trees. So the design you see, uh, is, is to give everybody what they want with a park and, and keeping those trees and memorial trees.
Yeah, two of the oak trees are right next to Lot twenty-one, and then the other two oak trees are right up near Bismarck where you see the, the sidewalk curve around them.
If, if that's a question for the, for, um, Mr. Hutton, we need it repeated.
She, she had concerns that the, the trees were dead.
Okay, um, yeah, wa- wait, 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 one moment, please. Let's give him a chance to respond, and then, uh, ma'am, we'll get to you. Hold on.
He wanted me to come up.
Okay, just, well, you can stay there, just wait a minute.
We also have City Forester and Park Superintendent Todd Deerfield on. Um, I'm going to ask Todd to respond because he's evaluated the trees. If, if I understood, the question is, are the trees already dead? I think that was the question. Todd?
Yes, I'm here, and there are some dead trees in that area, but there are, as Noel pointed out, four really large and old oak trees that are alive and well, that would have been impacted by the Evergreen Avenue, um, you know, extension through the, that area. Does that answer the question? Did you hear me?
Yes, yep, I, I think you answered the question, Todd.
Okay.
Thank you, Todd, and, and just one more time. We did have a meeting at seven-thirty a.m. with the Leisure Services Commission, and, and this was all discussed there, the reason for the layout of the park and so forth. And again, that, uh, board has approved and recommended moving forward of the park configuration as you have indicated. Thank you.
Ma'am, did you want to, did you ask, want to ask a follow-up question?
Yes, this is Amy Pard, uh, seven-twenty-two Eaglewood. It's not really a follow-up question, it's more of a statement. Um, when they tore down Edison, originally, they told us that the lots for the park was going to be bigger and it would be on the side where all the houses are. So that's where I'm confused, as the park keeps getting smaller. That's all.
This is, this is Paul again. Uh, best, my best response to that is we never had a, an actual configuration for the park and the meetings that, that I went to, and I've been to several over the years, and it has been much longer than we expected, um, to resolve this and, and build a park. But those meetings were always, it was always stated that there was going to be a joint development of both housing and a park on the property. Uh, I think the property was given to the city with that as one of the parameters that, that it wouldn't be, that it would be a development site, uh, with the park. So, uh, the, the configuration of the park is, has been smaller than this. Uh, and another developer's rendition, it's been larger than this on some, but this is, this is the first time that we've actually got something that, that we feel will work, and we think it's large enough, uh, to be a meaningful and, and very usable neighborhood park.
Okay, um, if we don't, oh, go ahead, Mr. Fittro.
Uh, sorry, just one more comment, uh, two things that came up earlier. Uh, one, when we met first time about, uh, it was last Friday with the Ne- Neighborhood Association Board, um, we had stated at that point we would allow, uh, the neighborhood to name, actually, they were talking about naming the park in which we also said they, they are more than welcome to name the subdivision as well. Uh, we just have Edison Edition on there right now as, as our reference point. Um, the other is, I would be more than happy to not name streets. So, uh, one, there was one request, uh, that if there was a memorial, uh, I don't know what that means to the city as far as, uh, allowing that to happen, but I would have no issues, uh, changing one or both of the street names if there was, um, uh, some meaning to that with the park.
Okay, um, is there anyone else, um, that is in the chambers or on the phone or by video that's here to speak on this agenda item? Okay, if not, do we have a motion by the commission to close the public hearing?
Virginia, we have someone coming to the podium.
Okay.
Yeah, my name's Jay Heilmann, uh, six forty-one Evergreen Avenue. Uh, one question for Paul Huddy. Um, talking, I've talked to him for several years about this, but, uh, the park now, I know if there's a parking lot that needs to be paved, is there, uh, uh, rules about having parking for, for the park? Or, and where would the parking be if, if, uh, that's the case?
Uh, yes, this is Paul again. We've discussed parking, uh, for the park, and this was a bigger issue when we were talking about the, the possibility of a, kind of a regional draw for an all-inclusive park. Um, this is more of a, a neighborhood park, very similar to neighborhood parks we have throughout the city, that the park is primarily walk-in, bike-in, uh, neighbors, and from the drawing, you can see you have a lot of neighbors right on the park. So we weren't planning parking. We, there would be room to put a couple handicap stalls, as was talked about earlier, um, if the need arises, but there will be some on-street parking, and then again, primarily, uh, designed to function as a neighborhood park for those neighbors in the immediate area.
Okay. Do we have a motion to close that public hearing?
So move, Lystico.
Okay, give me a second.
Second, certainly.
Okay. Um, all those in favor, state aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Um, unless there are any additional questions for staff, do we have a motion on the current recommendation? Motion to approve or deny the recommendation?
Uh, this is Lystico. I recommend that we approve the request by Panther Builders LLC for a site plan amendment to the R-one RP Planned Residence District and CP Planned Commercial District for thirty-two single-family homes located west of four-twenty Harwood Avenue, former Edison School Site, uh, and subject to the following conditions, that the final site plan would need to meet all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, draining, drainage, et cetera. That sidewalks be installed along the street frontages within the development, along with the east side of Evergreen, north side of Harwood, and any major changes to the plan would need to return for another site plan amendment.
Do we have a second?
Paul, second, certainly.
Okay, so any discussion on the motion or comments? Okay, I'm going to take a roll call vote because I think two of the commissioners had to leave the call. Um, Brandon?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Sue?
No.
Okay, Ally?
Yeah, Dame.
Okay, and the chair votes yes. Um, and then I think Craig left and Steve left, is that correct? Are you still on the phone? Okay.
I knew Craig had to drop off. Steve's not on either?
I don't.
Okay.
Where does that put us now?
We're still fine with the quorum, and that passes.
Okay, can you update everyone who's there in the chambers and on the phone what the next step is then? Does this go on to City Council?
Oh, you don't have a mic. Um, yes, it does go to council, um, I'm assuming it'll go in February. Um, the two meetings there would be the first and third Mondays in February on the City Council.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone who took the time to participate and, um, raise their concerns and questions. Um, thank you, Mr. Fittro and Jamie. Um, all right, next item on the agenda is a request by Thong Khan Leon for a special permit to allow for a religious facility to be located at seven-oh-one West Fifth in the C-two commercial district. Could we please have the staff report?
Uh, yes, this is, uh, Hiberger with the staff report. Uh, the applicant is requesting to allow for a two-thousand-seventy-nine square-foot religious facility at seven-oh-one West Fifth Street. Uh, the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The area contains both commercial and residential properties. Uh, the proposed request anticipates to impact pedestrian or traffic conditions in the area. Uh, the two-eighteen, uh, trails located twelve-hundred feet northwest of the project site, nearest open spaces, Washington Park. Uh, the property in question is owned C-two commercial district and has been zoned as such since nineteen sixty-nine to the north and west. Is residential and commercial, is owned C-two commercial district and R-four multiple residence district. To the south and east is residential commercial, is owned C-two commercial district and R-three multiple residence district. Uh, the area, uh, consists of, uh, commercial residential built between the eighteen-eighties and nineteen-sixties. No buffers or screenings required. Um, the, uh, structure, uh, structure has a, uh, a letter-of-map amendment, LOMA, um, and was approved by FEMA on October thirty-first, two thousand thirteen. Uh, the parking lot is located in a zone AO, which is a special flood hazard area. Um, Irving Element, um, let's see, uh, there is a ten-inch sanitary sewer main and twelve-inch storm sewer underneath Randolph Street. There's also a twenty-one-inch sanitary sewer underneath West Fifth. New utilities will be impacted by this project. Uh, future land use map designates this area as commercial. Uh, special use request would be in conformance, uh, with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for this area. Uh, the applicant is requesting the special mit- permit to allow for a religious facility, a commercial building in the facility. Uh, currently, uh, um, will have approximately, uh, uh, ten church members and approximately two-thousand-seventy square feet of space in the building. The sanctuary assembly area, uh, will only be one-thousand-six-hundred-fifty-nine square feet. Based on the size of the sanctuary assembly area, the, uh, occupancy would be two-hundred-and-thirty-seven persons. Parking requirements for religious facility is one parking space for each four persons of maximum occupancy of the sanctuary assembly area. This would require, uh, sixty parking spaces. Currently, there are approximately twenty-five spaces, um, on the east side of the building. The applicant, uh, will have, will be short approximately thirty-five spaces. The applicant will have to apply for a variance to the parking requirement. Uh, should be noted that the building code will not require sprinklers for the structure because it's well below the twelve-thousand square feet minimum. Uh, the applicant will need to work with building inspection in regards to installing code-compliant stairs on the front of the building and address American With Disabilities Acts accessibility issues with the structure as well. Um, architectural review will still be required to ensure fire and building codes are properly addressed. Uh, the applicant is not proposing to subdivide the property, so no subdivision ordinance requirements apply. Uh, therefore, staff recommends approval of the request by Thong Khan Leon for a special permit to allow for a religious facility to be located at seven-oh-one West Fifth Street in the C-two commercial district. The request, um, is in an area zone C-two commercial district. Would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood. It would not appear to have a negative impact on pedestrian or vehicular traffic conditions in the area. And that's the staff report.
Thank you. Do commissioners have initial questions for staff?
Is this address currently being used as a religious facility?
Um, it's not currently being, uh, used as a religious facility right now. Um, in fact, I'm not exactly, I don't, I think, if, the, I can't remember what the structure's been used for in the past.
Any other questions for staff? Um, is, um, the applicant either there in the chambers or on the phone and want to address the commission?
Um, yes, the applicant is here. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, my name is Tong Khanian. I'm, uh, property owner and I'm also the, the church pastor right now.
Is there anything in particular you want the commission to know?
Yeah, uh, right now, we do, uh, we don't have any space for the church building. We are only like the family, uh, you should, use for the church. And then I really hope for, uh, I got a permit today because we doing everything is a good thing, and then we pray for, what are we pray for, United States, we pray for the, uh, uh, around the world. So I think I really hope to, to get it, I mean.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Lin?
Um, just the ADA part, you know, um, all the other places that have steps, we, we make sure that they have a ramp for wheelchairs. Are you able to get that done in a timely fashion? Okay, thank you. So I got.
And this is Flynn. The applicant is also aware that they will be required to make sure fire and building codes are addressed at their cost, is that correct?
Yes.
This is Anderson with staff, so yeah, for, for occupancy, they'll have to meet all building codes and fire codes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else there in the chambers who's here to speak on that, this agenda item or on the phone? Any other, um, questions for staff from the commission? Otherwise, do we have a motion?
Uh, certainly, Lystico. I will motion that we approve the request by Thong Khan Leon for a special permit to allow for a religious facility to be located at seven-oh-one West Fifth in the C-two commercial district. Um, where are the conditions on that? Um, there are no conditions. However, I thought I heard someone saying we, the applicant must meet all fire, city codes and ordinances or whatever.
You want to add that as a condition then?
Uh, yeah, yeah, that's standard practice of us.
Thank you.
So I will do that as long as.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, okay.
Oh.
Second, Flynn.
Okay, any further discussion by the commission? Okay, all those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
So this one will go to the Board of Adjustment on the fourth Tuesday of the month, um, for the final decision. final decision.
Thank you, Mr. Leon.
Thank you for your patience.
All right, next we have, pull up here, a request by Nizad Jazaravik for an encroachment agreement to allow for parking of vehicles on a 16 by, 15 foot by 140 foot, 2,240 square feet section of a city right-of-way at 1,400 Black Hawk Street. Can we please have the staff report?
Uh, yes, the applicant is requesting approval of an encroachment agreement to allow for parking of vehicles on a 16 by 140, 2,240 square feet section of city right-of-way. The request could have a negative impact upon the surrounding area as approval of the encroachment could set precedence of other properties in the area to request to have similar encroachments on a city right-of-way. The city has approved parking in the right-of-way, but on a design improperly striped basis, this layout is lacking many design requirements. The request would not have a negative impact upon immediate pedestrian conditions in the area. There's a sidewalk along Black Hawk Street, sidewalk along West 12th Street, one block to the south. This request could cause concern for future sidewalk infill projects. The, uh, the area in question is Zone M1 Light Industrial District and has been as such since 1969. Line to the north, south, east and west is all Zone M1 Light Industrial District as well. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on drainage in the area. The project is located in Zone X protected by levy. Um, the, uh, there are, um, there is an 8-inch sewer main and 12-inch storm sewer underneath Black Hawk Street. No utilities will be impacted by this project. The future land use map designates this area as industrial. In, in the past, encroachment agreements that the city has entered into have included provisions that would allow for the city to give notice of termination of agreement in the city right-of-way is needed for any future public purposes and requiring that the city have no liability for any damage that may occur. Such areas are usually areas that cannot be relocated. The applicant is requesting to allow for vehicle parking on a 16 by 140, 2,024 square foot section of city-owned right-of-way along Black Hawk Street. Should be noted that the applicant will also have to apply for a variance to the five-foot minimum setback for a parking area from the property line. The applicant's parking lot extends all the way up to the sidewalk on the north property line. The parking along Black Hawk Street appears to have been expanded in 2012 with future expansion between 2019, 2021, none of which was done in accordance with setbacks, parking regulations, or et cetera. It is apparent vehicles are being placed on the site by driving over curbs, grass, sidewalks. The applicant is overloading the site with cars. While the display of cars can have some differing designs than a standard parking lot, the loading and unloading of the cars and placement of the site should follow codes for driveway access points, setbacks, and et cetera. The parking along West 12th Street is in the driveway and is not operating as an entry point, nor is it designated parking area. The applicant also recently paved a 14 by 20, 280 square foot area within the street right-of-way of West 12th Street without any approval and have been parking vehicles within the right-of-way on the existing driveway. Um, yeah, there's no planning required for this request. Therefore, staff is recommending that the request for an encroachment agreement by Nizad Jazaravik to allow for the parking of the vehicles on a 16 by 140, 2,240 square foot, feet section of city right-of-way at 1,400 Black Hawk Street be tabled for the following reasons. Staffing is a well-designed site, layout for entry points, exit points, how vehicles are placed on the site, and in a legal forward direction, and setbacks are met.
Seth, this is Virginia. Do, do you have a better, like, do you have an aerial map of this? Or can you direct us in the pictures that are in the report in terms of what area you're actually talking about? I'm a little confused.
Okay, there's, there should be, uh, um, I get, one of the aerial maps should, should provide like an area where, um, where the encroachment area is proposed.
Right before the pictometry. This is the, right there.
Okay. That's it.
They beat me.
Oh, that's right, they, they, page number of the packet. Let's see, what's the page number of the packet? Um, yes, it would be... I, it, it, okay, um...
So if we're looking at picture number two, is it, is it the part that, um, looks like it should be a sidewalk? Kind of where the...
Yeah, yeah, it's, I don't know, I guess, I don't know, mine doesn't have page numbers...
Picture number two would show you the area, and then if you go from that page ahead, one, two, three, four pages, you'll see the area in orange is the area being requested.
Yeah, it would be the area to the, yeah, basically to the, like, west, north, it's an oddly configured lot. Doesn't go north, southeast and west, but, um, on the, basically towards the, yep, towards 12th Street.
The reason that the, the staff is recommending it be tabled is we want to go out on site and maybe talk about it a little bit more and look at the overall orientation. The city has worked to allow for some parking in between the section of where the sidewalk would be and the curb in the past, especially for infill sites and on lower traffic streets. Of course, this street goes from Black Hawk down to 218, so there's not a lot of through traffic. If you're not going to a business on there, there's no real reason to drive on these. So it's a lower traffic street. We just want to make sure that we have a good idea of how the traffic is going to be working on the street so there's not any concerns for how vehicles are parked, visibility. Also, if you look along on this aerial with the orange along Black Hawk Street, it looks like there's some cars that were in an area that was paved kind of to that north side of the building, and it's uncertain how those cars are being brought onto there in accordance with the ordinance. It looks like they're probably being backed over the curb or something or over the sidewalk. So we'd like to, to meet with the applicant to kind of come up with a plan that will meet ordinance regulations as well as potentially allowing him to have a little bit more for parking. So we just need to get together and probably go over some of those details with the applicant, planning and engineering staff.
Uh, this is Commissioner Lystico. Have any of the nearby property owners been notified about this?
I'm not sure how the request came to us.
Thank you.
Was it the applicant? Okay, so we're not aware of any, we're not aware of any...
Code enforcement has come to us.
Okay, so code enforcement did have him come to us, so there might have been a complaint.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I just had a question for Noel or for your staff. Since, since we've identified this problem and code enforcement has identified this problem, which would indicate that there was a complaint, until you could meet with the owners and work this out, is there any kind of enforcement that's going to be happening? Or are we going to allow everything that's going on right now to continue until it comes back before this body?
It, it's kind of up to code enforcement. I, I believe generally when they're going through a process, they try to be a little flexible in trying to not necessarily make him move all the cars, thinking if it is approved and it's fine. So there probably is a little bit of flexibility in there that code enforcement usually works with. At the same time, I would imagine Councilman Boson, if there's any immediate site visibility concerns or something like that for the, for the complaint or, or for someone to have in that area, they'd have them move that car at least right away.
Okay, thank you.
Noel, is the applicant there or?
I believe so, yes.
I don't think we have anyone to discuss. Okay.
You want to come up and talk at all? Virginia, were you seeing if he had anything to add or?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Is there anything that you wanted to address with the commission?
No, just, I don't know, whatever, if you decide I have to do it, you know, I can't, I don't have nothing to say. I tried the, the, I moved the vehicle, I don't park anymore vehicle when inspectors coming down there, look, tell me, I move out of there, it's not anymore there. And I got the semi-trailer there, I move him out of there, it's not there anymore. I clean up and he tell me everything's okay, but just, I'm gonna see what you're gonna do with this, uh, the, by the sidewalk, whatever you make a decision, you know, that's the only thing.
This is Flynn, and, um, I just feel that if staff is saying they need more time to potentially get together and to solve this situation, I would make a motion that, um, the request for an encroachment agreement to allow for the parking of vehicles on a 2240 square foot section of city right-of-way at 1,400 Black Hawk Street be tabled for the following reason. Staff needs a well-designed site, layout for extra points, extra entries, and how vehicles are placed on the site in a legal forward direction, and setbacks are met.
Thank you, Flynn. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, certainly.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion amongst the commission?
Uh, Commissioner Lystico, I, I think quite a bit of this area is gonna be usable for Nizad here. But yeah, we definitely need to make sure that we're getting the proper markers and stuff and, you know, just making sure that everything is safe.
Okay, well, um...
I would, sorry, I would appreciate an update from staff after their meeting with him, you know, just to make sure that everything is, um, you know, understood and how they're going to move forward.
Yeah, Noel, can you expand on that? So after you would meet with and work some of the additional details out, then are you anticipating that it would come back before the commission for a recommendation?
That is correct, yeah. We'll go ahead and contact him to get a, a meeting set up out there to kind of go over the, the parameters of what we see as a concern and what, what we can do to make it work and, and then bring it back to the, to the commission for, for another review and, and vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any additional discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Thank you. Um, is there, are there any additional discussion items?
Uh, this is Lystico. I thought I'd seen on one of the documents some, this brief discussion on the, the streets, uh, fourth and fifth or fifth and sixth streets going to two-way instead of one-way, but I, I didn't know if that was part of this or not.
That was just a sec review.
Oh, very good, thank you.
Just to expand on that a little bit, yeah, so since we had all the city departments and, and staff there, we, sometimes we have some other issues that we'll bring up that just want to kind of talk about before they're ready to come for official approval.
Okay, thank you.
And there's a word set on that.
Okay. Okay. Um, any further discussion items?
This is Anderson with staff. Just to note that we are working on the comp plan with InterCog to kind of finalize that. We're very close, so we'll probably be bringing that back to the commission maybe in, in March or April as we kind of finalize. Right now, the majority of the, the, the update is done. We're kind of relooking at all the land use maps and, and things like that to make sure that they're all updated with information that we have based on new things being built, new roads being built, new infrastructure and all that, so we'll, we'll bring that back to you soon.
And would that be a special meeting, like how we were addressing it before, or would that be part of a regular meeting?
We can definitely bring it to you for a meeting, for a review, and if there's a, a thought that we need to go over it a little bit more, we can have some subcommittee meetings, special meetings, or we can just move ahead. So we'll kind of, we'll kind of leave that up to you guys as, when you start looking through the information, if we need to have some sub-meadings as well.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I see, our next meeting is scheduled for February 8th. Any other additional items to talk about?
Uh, yeah, since we're here all day, um, no, I will make sure as Community Development Board liaison that I take note of the block grant funding request for Edison Park and, uh, you know, relay any information I got out of this meeting to that meeting.
Okay. Great. Um, otherwise, do we have a, a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Schoberg.
Second, Lystico.
Second. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you, everyone, we are adjourned. We appreciate you.